I'd like to call the board supervisor being to order by Prince Edward County. Mr. Dr. Pratt?
Good evening. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. And if you would join me with the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Do we have a conflict of interest for mail-in?
Sir.
Okay. And now we do the recognitions.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. We proudly recognize Heaven Draper, Chief Deputy Commissioner of Revenue as the September Employee of the Month. She's a valued member of the Commissioner Revenue's office for five years and recently promoted to chief deputy and continues to demonstrate outstanding leadership and dedication. She is celebrated for her kindness, patience, and willingness to help others. Since her promotion, Heaven has gone above and beyond to support colleagues, offering encouragement and guidance with an unfailingly positive attitude. She even created a comprehensive training booklet with screenshots, handwritten notes, diagrams, and color coding to ensure a new team member could confidently learn their responsibilities. We are grateful to Heaven for her professionalism, initiative, and commitment to uplifting others, and we're blessed to have her as a part of our family.
Congratulations. Thanks for the good work. Congratulations. Okay. And now, Mr. Doug. Mr. Stanley, would you like to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As the board is aware, the Virginia Association of Counties, or VACO, recently announced Prince Edward County as a recipient of the 2025 VACO Achievement Award, the county's third successive award. This year, the county's award application was for its groundbreaking partnership with Longwood University's Civitae Student Symposium. The county engaged hundreds of students in shaping the newly adopted Comprehensive Plan PEC 2045 forward together. For one day during each of the last three academic semesters, Longwood University seniors worked in teams to identify strategies for attracting and retaining young professionals and families, a critical goal for reversing the county's projected population decline. This collaboration was not just an academic exercise. It involved real-world problem solving. The students brought insight, energy, and creative solutions to one of the county's most pressing challenges: how to make Prince Edward Farmville a place where young people want to stay, work, and raise a family. And with that, I want to turn it over to James Hutser, Government Relations Associate with the Virginia Association of Counties.
Mr. Chair, members of the Prince Edward County Board, James Hutser, VACO, as Mr. Stanley just said, happy to be here. I will never turn down an opportunity to come and visit Prince Edward County. I spent three years here getting my undergraduate at Longwood, so I am always indebted to your county, where you all are from, and I really appreciate and love the experience I have here, so much so that my little brother also went to Longwood. So, we are definitely a Prince Edward County household. But yeah, the award is fantastic. I, like I said, after I graduated, a big fan of the Civitae curriculum. I see President Reeveley's even here, so I'm a little nervous saying this in front of him, but the Civitae curriculum was fantastic. I'm so happy to see that Longwood partnered with county governments to look at rural areas, areas that are losing and declining in population, because it's not just Prince Edward County. I mean, there are 95 counties in this beautiful state, and a lot of them are facing the same issues. And a lot of what I do with rural affairs issues and agricultural issues is also try to reverse the brain drain, try to bring economic development to rural counties. And so, I think this program is very, for lack of a better term, good. I think it's very important that localities team up and partner with local community colleges, four-year schools, two-year schools, whatever it may be, to try and reverse the tide that we're seeing in rural areas. So, I really commend you all, and I'm happy to present this award to Prince Edward.
I'd like to ask our Longwood delegation to come up and join us for a foot walk. And President Reeveley, he would never turn down an opportunity to give you a word for this.
It's dangerous to give a college president a microphone. This is a wonderful thing, and James, you're really wonderful to be here. And, you know, the far future, in my opinion, is really bright, because we're all working at it together. This curriculum that Longwood's worked really hard to bring to life over the last decade and really hitting its stride over the last eight years is a very special thing. I'd go so far as say it's unique in the country. We think college is a classic public and private good for people. You know, you're getting ready for your career, but we really fundamentally think that you're getting ready to be a citizen in our county, in our Commonwealth, in the nation, and that that's something that college really ought to be forefront-focused on. So, we're really proud that we are, and enormously appreciative to Doug for all the time that he's spent really breathing life into Civitae and letting what can feel at times dry in the classroom become really lively and practical when it's put to good use for very specific ends, thinking about great stuff for the future. So, I'm really proud. I'm really thrilled to be here, and you all can see, we do have a large delegation. We're very proud of this award. And with that...
We all spell one letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty good. There's two more to do. That's exactly right. That's right. All right. Now, we go with the public participation. Mr. Kenneth Jackson?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members.
Good evening.
You know, you very seldom see me unless I have something I have to say. And one of the reasons you don't see me is I think you're all doing a great job. I'm very proud of the way our county's going. It's been 20 years. When I first moved here, I ran for lead district. Something bothered me, and a friend of mine once said, "When the elections and stuff are all over, we're still neighbors. We're still citizens." Something besmirched Mr. Townsend's reputation. You know, everyone that knows me knows that I don't play games. If I think that we can't trust you, I'd voice that. I have no reason not to trust anybody on this board. None of you are on the take. It bothers me for whatever reason, political or anything else, because, like I said, when it's all over, we still have to live here. I helped work with Verso. It's a hard thing to do, going around begging people for donations and stuff like that, but it's a beautiful thing you've done. I've seen that come from just a dirt lot where we were just pushing them over and cleaning it up to what it is now. Never let anyone say that any of you are on the take. I will defend all of you to the hilt on that. I don't care what your politics are, don't care what your parties are, don't care what your color, anything else is. We're all neighbors. And I had to say that. I had to come here tonight to say that, because I don't like that. Now, you're a better man, and you're more Christian than I am, because I'll sue someone for that. You approve it, or I'll sue you, because I don't play with that. Your jobs are very important. You have the lives of, what, 22,000 citizens plus in your hands, and y'all have done a wonderful job with them. I love the way this county is going. I love the direction it's going in. I'm sorry I don't get a chance to see all of you so much. My God, I keep looking at you, Mr. Jones, because I remember you when you... Oh, God. You know where...
It wasn't very long ago.
It was a lot of years ago. But I want you to know, guys, seriously, we're proud of you, and I will fight for either one, any of y'all, to the hilt, but I will never let anyone besmirch your reputations without proof and backing it up, because in the end, I don't care where you're at. Prospect, wherever, we're all neighbors.
That's right.
And this is Prince Edward County.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kenneth, for that and having our support, your support, and really thank you, appreciate that. Okay. Now, I want to say it's the YMCA. I couldn't make out your name, but I did make out YMCA.
Chair, and we have you under bolt 11.
There you go.
A little bit farther down, we've got you on for a report, so we can skip you here unless...
It's totally your call.
We'll come back to you.
Gotcha.
Not long from now.
Okay. Okay, now we have Ms. Allison Cruz.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm thankful to be here. I just wanted to return with a little bit of an update of things that are going on locally with the Immigrant Compassion Education Project. Some information just came to me earlier today. It's from the Vera Institute. They do a lot with dealing with mass incarceration, but this came to me via the Amika Center for Immigrant Rights. And so, statistically, on June 28th, ICE reported that 57,861 people were detained, and that's the highest number ever recorded in the past 16 years. Since the beginning of this administration's term, 59 new facilities have opened to expand their reach ever further, and then 77 centers have reopened. So, places that were once shut down or idle are now holding people again, which I think probably brings us to our neighborhood here, I feel like, because it seems like it was habitated and then quiet, and then now we're busy. For the event that we had there before, the vigil for Kilmar, it was close to 200 people that came on that Sunday, and they came from locals. There were Charlottesville representation, Lynchburg representation, Richmond, and other areas as well, so people care from a whole lot of different places. And our next effort is going to be a collaborative effort with the same groups, and we're calling it Bearing Witness. Excuse me. September 29th, which is a Monday, from 4:00 to 6:00, we'll be gathering again at 2790 West Third Street, and everybody is invited to peacefully hold space there. We will join together to unite our energies to support and love our neighbors. We will channel our sacred rage to uplift all. Area clergy will lead us in song, sharing, and learning, along with guest speakers. We will send peace and love down the street to our neighbors at the Farmville Detention Center. So, I just wanted to share that with everybody and keep you posted. There'll also be another event here on the courthouse lawn, October 18th, which is a Saturday, from noon to 2:00, and I believe we'll be marching down to the Appomattox and back. So, again, everybody is welcome. It's for all of our freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we got the board supervisor comments. Mr. Emmett?
I'd like to say to those of you here, thank you for being here.
Likewise, Supervisor Emmett, thank you for being here. Appreciate your concern pertaining to Prince Edward County.
I'd like to say thanks for all of you that took the time to come out and see how your government works. We definitely appreciate the input that we receive from our citizens. Thank you. And to our school superintendent.
Absolutely. Mr. Matty Gilmore?
Glad to see you all tonight. Pled for any comments to give us guidance. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody here. Superintendent Jones, good to have you here. Everybody in attendance. I would like to officially thank Mr. Jerry Townsend. I had the opportunity to attend his community event Saturday. It was so well-organized, well-represented, and it was something unlike you've seen before. He did an excellent job. Mr. Townsend has done so much for that community. I speak because my daughter lives in that community, and I have to say, Mr. Townsend, you've done a fantastic job, and Saturday was truly awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the food was really good. Oh, yes.
I wasn't aware there was going to be food. I would have canceled my appointment.
Oh, yeah.
It went bad, Ken. It went bad.
That's all that I have to say. No, thanks so much for coming, and, you know, sometimes this is a thankless job. You just got thanked by that person. That is a rarity when people come up and don't have a be in their body as we understand. I think most of us have done the same thing, you know? The only reason we're up here is because we are concerned citizens, and we appreciate your concern, and thanks for attending.
Again, I want to thank you for being here. Thank you for holding us accountable for holding your representatives that you elect elected based off of the principles they hold. We're up here, we have to make difficult decisions, but thank you for holding us accountable for taking your God-given rights. I'll leave that there, but thank you for being here.
Thank all y'all for coming, and I also went over to Verso and had a really good time, just sit back, eating fried chicken, visiting, and talking to people. That's what we need more of, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. It was really nice. Okay, now we go get approval in a minute. Do we get a motion?
So, move.
Second. Okay. Supervisor Gilmore?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
And Ms. Peddicook?
Yes.
And Jenkins says yes. Okay. And now we have the junior department of forestry, Kirby Wolfalk. That's announced correctly? Close?
Close.
Okay.
Forest manager, okay.
All right, board, Mr. Stanley, thank you so much for having me. I'm Kirby Wolfalk. I'm the manager out at the Prince Edward Galleon State Forest, and every year I like to come give a visit on kind of what we've been up to out at the forest. This year's been kind of an up and down year. We just recently completed our update of our 10-year management plan. It's under eternal review right now. Once we get the final draft, I'll make sure to get Mr. Stanley a copy of it for his reference and records. We've also, for the past couple of years now, been hosting our new employee orientation and trainings out there to showcase new employees who then go out all over the state of Virginia, how to do good forest management. So, y'all should be really proud to have such an asset that is actually looked upon by everyone else from the state and used as a training facility on how well you manage in your forest and taking care of your land. We began doing some studies with drones out at the Prince Edward Galleon Forest. Right now, we're using it to actually spray instead of using backpack sprayers or helicopters. We're actually starting to use drones. We hope to start using it in mapping and even maybe possibly get into it to where we can do forest inventory with it. We're still a ways away from that, and it's going to take some AI research, but we're really moving forward with our technology out there as we manage the forest. On the downside of things, we did find a pretty significant southern pine bark beetle spot out on the forest this year. It's actually been relatively prevalent all over the state this particular year. We found a spot out there, only amounted to about 40 trees, so it wasn't big. It's already been isolated, and it's actually already undergone a timber sale to where we can go ahead and get that spot cut out. But 40 trees is still right much, is still something we don't like to see, but it's not the 40 acres I'd like the spot they found out in Charlotte County. So, hopefully things will start turning around, and we can keep this under wraps. It is something that we are overdue for, so as you talk with your constituents and landowners, let them know that this is a possibility and something that they should be keeping an eye out on their own land for. One harvest that we did and was recently completed out there on the Prince Edward Forest was for 42 acres, and as you know, the county gets a portion of that fund, and this year that amounted to $46,806. I'll return that check over to Ms. Baker, but I'm here now if y'all have any questions or comments for me.
This new fly that has come into Virginia.
The spotted lanternfly?
Any studies or any type of control? I was in northern Virginia a few weeks ago in a man's shop, and the floor was full of those things.
Okay, so it is a pest. Luckily for us, it attacks tree of heaven, which is an invasive species for us. So, despite the fact that we don't like to see any invasive species, at least this one attacks species of trees that we don't like to have around. It is terrible for vineyards, though, as it also attacks grapevines and vineyards out there. So, that's where it's kind of been really devastating. As far as the rest of the forest and deforestation, that it's nothing to be of major concern about. It is just a new invasive species that I think they've even given up on the quarantine of doing it now. There's no longer any quarantines in effect.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
And now we have the YMCA.
Thank you, guys, for having me. I appreciate it. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about partnerships, and we're going through a strategic plan right now for the YMCA to see what the YMCA needs to be to the community, and that is from the Virginia Alliance of YMCA's, and Patrick Crute is the director of that, and he has a vested interest in this community, so that's pretty cool. But so far, we have worked with partnerships with Crystal and Superintendent Jones for memberships for the Prince Edward County community. The first thing I want to do, since I've said that, is to thank you guys for your grant, because we have earmarked a lot of that grant for the Prince Edward County School System to teach all 142 kids, if they come, swim lessons, and that's really important because it's the leading cause of death of kids from 1 to 5, and it's second in kids 6 to 9. So, if we can do that with all, everything that's surrounding in the water on the, you know, we were talking to Mayor Brian Vincent in the second meeting we had in the strategic plan, and he's like, "Oh, my goodness, that's something I can get behind," because he owns a kayaking and, you know, business here in the community, and he says most of the deaths come from paddle incidents where people get into kayaks, and they think they can swim so they don't put on the vest, or they don't think they're going to dump, so they don't put on the vest, and then they're in an emergency. So, the Y can do only what the community allows, and I've given each of you a brochure of what we spent money on last year and how much we spent, but this year, our big focus right now is safety around water, because it is really needed in the community, with us being the only pool that offers swim lessons. So, I want to thank you guys for supporting that. We're really grateful, and that's all I have. You know, I wasn't quite sure, where do I go? But we really are looking to build partnerships and collaborations with different communities or different parts of the community. Faces is another one. So, I have some ideas about how can we teach them how to use good food and teach them how to serve it, give them a recipe for it as they serpentine through the Y parking lot to get their food. So, I wonder if, just imagine with me, I wonder if the Y can work with Faces to see what they're serving. We can get a local caterer to give us a recipe for it. We could serve it throughout the line as they go up to Faces and get that bag of food and be able to use avocados and cilantro and butternut squash instead of mac and cheese boxes. And so, that's a dream of mine, another dream of mine. Childcare is another hope that we can do in the near future, and we're working toward that. So, thank you, guys, so much for your grant and support of the YMCA. We will be good stewards of your money, and we're so grateful that we're recipients of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Okay. And now we go with highway matters. Mrs. Scott Frederick?
Thank you, Chairman and board. Thank you for having me tonight. I've got a good update for you. As far as our rural rustic program, I'll start by introducing my...
Any studies or any type of control? I was in northern Virginia a few weeks ago in a man's shop and the floor was full of those things.
Okay, so it is a pest. Luckily for us, it attacks tree of heaven, which is an invasive species for us. So despite the fact that we don't like to see any invasive species, at least this one attacks species of trees that we don't like to have around. It is terrible for vineyards though, as it also attacks grapevines and vineyards out there. So that's where it's kind of been really devastating. As far as the rest of the forest and deforestation, that it's nothing to be of major concern about. It is just a new invasive species that I think they've even given up on the quarantine of doing it now. There's no longer any quarantines in effect.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And now we have the YMCA.
Thank you guys for having me. I appreciate it. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about partnerships. And we're going through a strategic plan right now for the YMCA to see what the YMCA needs to be to the community. And that is from the Virginia Alliance of YMCA's. And Patrick Crute is the director of that and he has a vested interest in this community, so that's pretty cool. But so far, we have worked with partnerships with Crystal and Superintendent Jones for memberships for the Prince Edward County community. The first thing I want to do, since I've said that, is to thank you guys for your grant because we have earmarked a lot of that grant for the Prince Edward County School System to teach all 142 kids, if they come, swim lessons. And that's really important because it's the leading cause of death of kids from 1 to 5 and it's second in kids 6 to 9. So if we can do that with all, everything that's surrounding in the water, you know, we were talking to Mayor Brian Vincent in the second meeting we had in the strategic plan and he's like, "Oh, my goodness, that's something I can get behind." Because he owns a kayaking and, you know, business here in the community. And he says most of the deaths come from paddle incidents where people get into kayaks and they think they can swim so they don't put on the vest or they don't think they're gonna dump, so they don't put on the vest and then they're in an emergency. So the Y can do only what the community allows. And I've given each of you a brochure of what we spent money on last year and how much we spent. But this year, our big focus right now is safety around water because it is really needed in the community with us being the only pool that offers swim lessons. So I want to thank you guys for supporting that. We're really grateful and that's all I have. You know, I wasn't quite sure, where do I go? But we really are looking to build partnerships and collaborations with different communities or different parts of the community. Faces is another one. So I have some ideas about how can we teach them how to use good food and teach them how to serve it, give them a recipe for it as they serpentine through the Y parking lot to get their food. So I wonder if, just imagine with me, I wonder if the Y can work with Faces to see what they're serving. We can get a local caterer to give us a recipe for it. We could serve it throughout the line as they go up to Faces and get that bag of food and be able to use avocados and cilantro and butternut squash instead of mac and cheese boxes. And so that's a dream of mine, another dream of mine. Childcare is another hope that we can do in the near future and we're working toward that. So thank you guys so much for your grant and support of the YMCA. We will be good stewards of your money and we're so grateful that we're recipients of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, and now we go with highway matters. This is Scott Frederick.
Thank you, Chairman and Board. Thank you for having me tonight. Got a good update for you. As far as our rural rustic program, I'll start by introducing myself. Everybody else does that and I feel like I never do. Scott Frederick with V9. So turning our gravel roads into hard surface roads. We're working on three this year in the county. Junction Canal, Quail Crossing and Rice Creek. Junction Canal, the ditches and drainage work's done. We're placing the base stone. Yesterday, we put down 1,200 tons. That was a very good day. We're hoping to be wrapping up the base stone late this week or maybe early next week and then we'll be ready to shoot the surface on that one. We're gonna move that crew over from Junction Canal when they finish the base stone over to Quail Crossing and they'll get the drainage and the ditches and get the base stone down there. And Rice Creek is also finished with the base stone. So once all three of them have the base stone down, we'll start shooting surfaces. Those will be finished out. Quail Crossing, we were hoping to be further on that than we are now, but when Sandy River Road closed, we decided not to work on a road that people might be using as a cut through. So Sandy River Road had a bridge on it, but one of the piers was scoured out. Scour is when something basically erodes underneath the water. So it was closed from July 30th to September the 4th. And the contractor came in and they excavated around the bottom of it. There was exposed timber pilings and they encapsulated all that with concrete and built back around the bottom of the bridge, armored it with riprap and hopefully we shouldn't have that problem again anytime soon. So, and that scour problem was found just in a routine bridge inspection, so that's one of the reasons we inspect. We've done a lot of patching work throughout the county. Specifically, we've done some on Dominion Drive and then also in the neighborhood behind Price Drive. And we're doing that work because we have what we call a latex schedule where we come and put new surfaces down on those roads. So if you've had any complaints from the patching work we've done, later this month, they're scheduled to come in and put that new surface down. So it's gonna be short-lived, what they're seeing right now. And if somehow the schedule gets off, the end of the contract is October 27th. They have to be done by then. So I'll keep you guys updated if anything changes on that. But we do apologize for that inconvenience. I think they're gonna be very happy with the finished product. Down in the southern part of the county on 360, there's an old railroad bridge where the railroad doesn't use the tracks that are anymore. It's actually been shut down for years. We're building some crossovers in the median of 360 and we're gonna shift traffic all over to what I guess you would call the West Brown Bridge. So it'll be two-lane traffic on that bridge, hopefully by the end of the month. And then we're gonna disappear for a little while. We're still working on the plans. We're gonna remove both of those bridges in the future. The eastbound bridge will be removed first, but we're gonna replace it with roadway there since the railroad is no longer in service. So the whole reason we're shifting traffics now, we did another bridge inspection and we were about to have to put a weight restriction on the bridge. So in order to avoid doing that, we're doing this traffic shift early. It's something that would have just been implemented by the project, but we kind of accelerated that. So if anybody has asked why we've been down there working, that's the answer to all of that. That's all I can prepare to update on tonight. We're doing other routine work with potholes and tree limbs and mowing. We've done a safety cut after our last round of mowing. We sort of started right back where we finished with mowing the grass again. It's been a very good growing year. So, but enough about that. If you guys have any comments for me, I'd be happy to take one.
You mentioned tree limbs, so I appreciate that. You and I conversed last week, so you got that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for the update on Price Drive.
Okay. I'm sure you were asked.
Rice Depot Road, there's a lot of grass right beside the road, about three or four feet tall.
Okay.
On 460 on the way to the High Bridge Trail thing, it's very tall.
Okay.
And then after you go through the stop sign in front of Piscatah Church, to keep straight, it's part of a tree that died and fell hanging down right over the road.
Okay, on Piscatah Church Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, that's the one on Rice Depot.
On Rice Depot.
Right across from the firehouse. Just before you get to the firehouse, you'll see it.
Okay.
The big brown cocaine up in the tree.
Okay.
And I see where y'all fixed some of the shoulders on the tavern, but it's still some. Could do a little more maybe.
Okay, take a second, look at some of those.
This is not for you, Scott, but this is for the county, I think. The road signs, the county signs. There's a lot of them in 360 when you're going toward Mahern, old peach tree. Those signs need to be straightened, erected properly. And several of them, they probably just need to make a tour through there and straighten them out. East both, east and west.
Probably some of our snow contractors.
Yeah, that's probably what it is.
It's been windy.
But if they can go through there and straighten some of them up, some of them right, they almost felt to the point where they're almost ready to fall over.
Lot of storms this year, straight line winds.
Scott, thanks so much for your information. And before you leave, I have a little gift for you I would like to give you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Looks like an invitation.
You also have a gift for Jerry.
Like a reminder. Thank you.
You have a gift for him also?
I'll wait till after October.
Thank you, Scott. You know about it, that's just a...
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Scott, thank you for looking at Peach Road. I see that they've been out there and patched on that. There's, I guess you'd call it, the sides of Tuggle Road are breaking away. If you would, have them check that.
Okay, on Tuggle?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And there are several dead trees on Oliver Road that are gonna fall in the road if they don't do something with them.
Okay.
If you want to give me a call one day or send somebody out there, I'd be glad to show them where they are.
Okay.
But they're completely dead and gonna fall in the road. In fact, the limbs are already fallen.
Okay, dead trees on Oliver.
And Old Prospect Road.
And Old Prospect.
Yeah, 608 on the south side.
Compliments, Scott. Rice Creek looked really well.
Okay, good.
I was there on that Saturday and I went all the way to the bridge.
Gotcha.
And it looked really good.
Yeah, I always get nervous when we have the base stone done before we get that surface on there.
They've really done a good job with that.
Yeah, so to keep our fingers crossed for more weeks like this week till we get the surface on there.
I didn't mention to you the stop sign at 540.
We got it replaced today.
Thanks. Thanks for all your help.
Yeah, no problem at all. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
The Board of Supervisors has received a request from the Prince Edward County School Board requesting $929,812.26 of federal and state carryover funds and local private business funds for the school operating budget per the attached letter from the acting school superintendent. We've also had a request to draw down funds from the school construction assistance program and a literary loan totaling $33,655,709 for the elementary school renovation. The Board of Supervisors will wish to approve and appropriate the funds requested following the public hearing to amend the FY '26 county and school budgets by the amount of $34,585,521.26. Per Code of Virginia, the locality may amend its budget during the fiscal year. And however such an amendment exceeds the current adopted expenditures by 1% or more, then the locality must advertise the amendment at least seven days prior to the public hearing. The county's currently approved FY '25, sorry, that would be FY '26 budget, is $127,692,756, which means the request exceeds the 1% threshold. We have the public hearing notices that were in the Farmville Herald and then you'll hold your public hearing. Thank you.
Public hearing's everybody here, okay? All right, so if we go ahead and ask everybody to speak. Anybody want to speak on that?
Nobody signed up.
They don't want to ask?
Superintendent, do you wish to speak? Are you good? Not a college president yet. We need a motion, Mr. Chair. There's a recommended motion in the packet.
I move, I think a motion to follow the board which should increase the FY '26 county budget and FY '26 school budget by $34,585,521.26 and appropriate the same funds for the school operating budget as well as renovations to the elementary school.
Second.
Two by the Go.
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by the Watson?
Yes.
Two by the Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes? Paddy Coop?
Yes.
Two by the Towns?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, now we go into 2025 personal property tax relief.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Commissioner Revenue has computed the Personal Property Tax Relief Act percentage of tax relief from the Commonwealth for tax year 2025 to be 25.75% of assessed value based on guidelines provided by the Commonwealth. That percentage last year was 26% for 2024. And your packet is a draft resolution based on one that you've adopted every year since, I guess, 2006 when it was put in place by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And again, to confirm, vehicles at 1,000 or less, they get the same percentage. And it's really, it's all vehicles under 20,000, they get their percentage. If you're, the value over 20,000 is not subject to the percentage. Is that the same value as previous years? Value should be, it's going down. It went down .25%. Threshold of 20 grand, the 20 grand exemption. That has remained constant. That's in the state code.
Is this rate applied automatically or is it applied for biases?
Automatically.
Automatically.
Reflects automatically.
And the other question?
There's a draft recommended motion there at the bottom of the page.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, two by the Go.
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by the Watson?
Yes.
Two by the Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes? Paddy Coop?
Yes.
Two by the Towns?
Yes.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, now we have Ms. Crystal Baker. With the opioid settlement resolution.
Chris, I'm glad you get to pronounce each of these different agencies.
There you go.
Okay, attached for the board's consideration is a resolution approving the county's participation and the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Alvegin, Amneal, Apetex, Hikma, Endevior, Mylan, Sun and Zytus, and directing county attorney to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlements.
So moved.
Second.
Two by the Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two by the Watson?
Yes.
Two by the Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes? Two by the Jones and Emmett?
Yes.
Two by the Towns?
Yes.
Two by the Jones?
Yes.
And now, we'll go ahead to household hazardous waste collection day.
Pending the board's approval, staff has tentatively scheduled the 2025 Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day for November 1st. Because our purchase order, quote, "exceeds the $20,000 threshold," has to come to the Board of Supervisors for approval. Last year, the county had 91 citizens come through and dispose of household hazardous waste and we expended $22,351.21. So we would ask that the board authorize the approval of the quote. Now, I will tell you that the actual charge will be based on the actual amount. But they anticipate that that's...
You should start seeing less each year as people clean out their sheds and garages and basements.
Right.
You have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Okay, two by the Go.
I'm a yes and a no. So I guess, first of all, let me say one thing, that they're charging us to get rid of lead batteries, which we can recycle and get paid for ourselves. They're actually 32 cents a pound right now if you want to carry them to J&amp;J or wherever else. There's some things in here that we're getting charged for that we certainly shouldn't. But I am for having the ability to get rid of the household hazardous waste. I mean, yes, but just so everyone knows that...
And I could, the thing is that recyclable that we can make money off, you want to retract?
If I could interject, Supervisor Emmert, that's something that we could work out and Sarah and Jeff can talk to them. We could have a separate pallet and set those batteries aside.
And that's what we did last year. Depending upon what it is...
Correct.
So I know last year, for example, I believe it was propane cylinders came through and Jeff would remove them. He was there with every vehicle trying to ascertain if there were things that in fact could come to the county. And I know things like propane cylinders, he removed because he could recycle them. So maybe we need to specify, perhaps it's lithium batteries. I think there are some things that we can't...
Ni-CAD and lithium, you can up it in the landfill.
Lithium batteries?
And Ni-CAD.
And...
Ni-CAD.
Nickel cadmium.
Oh, okay.
Both. But the reason why, if whoever did this estimate had done it correctly, it wouldn't have had to come to us to begin with. It would have been under $20,000. Which would have been, the board wouldn't have to vote on it. I think we're getting hoodooed by spending money where we really don't have to. And that's the reason why I say I'm a yes and a no. Yes, I am for the hazardous waste. I just think that in the future, we need to know exactly what they're... I know what they will take, but whether they take, I mean, $706 for propane cylinders and we didn't use it for them last year and you've got lead acid batteries for $225, which, that's $1,000 right there. If you knock off one or two more, it wouldn't have had to come to the board to begin with.
It came out to $250 per user.
And that's where my second part is, is that it's pretty expensive for the 91 people that used it. I don't know what the answer is, that we have to have some kind of way to get rid of hazardous waste, but where do we do so?
And this was the first time in years we've had one?
Yes.
Yes.
Which means there'll be fewer than 91 this time, unless we really crow about it, talk about it, which is good and bad. We spend more money, but at least we're letting people avail.
That's the reason why I say I'm a yes on doing it, but there's...
Collecting it hopefully keeps it out of our streams and our fields and our landfill and our... I mean, you know, and even in our convenience sites. So if we call attention to it, we're pulling it out of the waste stream because the worst-case scenario is that these things end up in the landfill and then end up in our leachate. And then when our landfill engineers do the environmental work and, you know, and we have some of these, I'm gonna say, items that shouldn't be in our landfills show up, that can be problematic for the county long run. So it's better that we remove them from the waste stream and separate them and dispose of them properly than to pay in the long run for the environmental impact that could occur if they go into the landfill.
Just for future, and maybe this needs to come before the properties board or whatever else, but I mean, we're talking about, one of the largest ones is $1,950 and that's one five-gallon bucket of mercury.
Right.
Has to go to the same place that a lot of that other... Has to go to the same place that a lot of that other goes to begin with. So I'm not saying Clean Harbors is not the best or whatever else, but something we certainly need to look into. If you look at, if you look at what, the quantity, it's one, and then you look at where the U O M, it's one five-gallon pail, one five-gallon bucket, nineteen hundred and fifty dollars for mercury, which they're probably not going to get any of because no one knows what mercury is anymore, so.
Last year, we got a mason jar.
I was going to say, unless, unless someone brings something in particular.
And we also had the Health Department bring all of their old mercury thermometers. So in fact, we, we spent a good amount last year on mercury, which was, again, I mean, it's a good thing to, to remove it from the waste stream. I was looking to see if I could find that. Last year, we spent one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the, for the mercury devices that were, were brought.
But I'll, I'll certainly, we'll talk to Jeff about the potential for lead batteries, that we can set them aside on a pallet. We can handle, we'll be glad to do that.
Two of us, Townsend? Go get.
Yes.
Two of us, Jones?
Yes.
Two of us, Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two of us, Gill?
I'm a yes with the sorting of batteries.
Okay. Yes, same thing. Okay. All right. And so now we're going to, we're going to have the finance, human resource report. Ms. Sheriff?
Thank you, ma'am.
Talk, talk into the microphone.
Hello. Hello. There you go.
All right. Time for school appropriations for FY twenty-six. We've received a request from the Prince Edward County School Board to appropriate funds totaling fifty-six thousand five dollars to the school operating budget as described in the attached documents from the Prince Edward County School Board.
Correction, Sheriff, it's five hundred and sixty thousand and five dollars.
Isn't that what I said?
Fifty-six thousand.
I'm sorry. Apologize.
I like hers better.
Yes, but I think Chip would rather have the five hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah.
This request is for local appropriation of funds as described, and there is no local match.
So moved.
Second.
Two of us, Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two of us, Watson?
Yes.
Two of us, Jones?
Yes.
Two of us, him?
Yes.
Two of us, Towns?
Yes.
Two of us, Patty Cooper?
Yes.
And I'm a yes too.
Next is FY school appropriation for funds totaling thirty thousand dollars in the state funds to the local operating budget as described below, and there is no local match.
Is that three hundred?
Three hundred thousand?
Three hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Am I skipping a zero in here?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
It's past my bedtime.
That's okay. So moved. Second. Okay. Two of us, Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two of us, Watson?
Yes.
Two of us, Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Two of us, Patty Cooper, Jones?
Yes.
Two of us, Townsend?
Yes.
Two of us, him?
Yes.
Next is National Opioid Settlement Funds. In August, Prince Edward County received twenty-two thousand sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents from the Opioid Settlement Fund Trust. These funds are required to be used for opioid remediation. The board is asked to appropriate the funds received as below.
So moved.
Second.
Two of us, him?
Yes.
Two of us, Townsend?
Yes.
Two of us, Patty Cooper, Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Two of us, Jones?
Yes.
Two of us, Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two of us, Gill?
Yes.
Next is FY twenty-five committed funds transfer approval. At the end of each fiscal year, the county addresses unexpended or unencumbered funds to enable Prince Edward County to better prepare for future expenses, both planned and unexpected. The FY twenty-six appropriation resolution adopted on June tenth, twenty twenty-five, provides that all outstanding encumbrances as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five are re-appropriated FY twenty-six in the same cost centers and accounts. Unencumbered appropriations lapse unless they relate to ongoing operational programs or projects supported by county funds or grants, which must be pre-approved by the county administrator and submitted to the board for, for final approval. Capital project appropriations do not lapse at year end and remain in effect until project completion or board action. Accordingly, the staff recommends the board confirm the transfer of the unexpended FY twenty-five funds listed below into the appropriate committed fund balances to be re-appropriated and used for their original purposes upon subsequent release and approval by the board.
So moved.
Second.
Two of us, Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two of us, Watson?
Yes.
Two of us, Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Two of us, Emmett?
Yes.
Two of us, Townsend?
Yes.
Two of us, Patty Cooper, Jones?
Yes.
Next is FY twenty-five committed funds transfer appropriation request. The board is asked to appropriate and approve the transfer of the below-referenced remaining FY twenty-five funds into the committed capital improvement project line. This enables Prince Edward County to better prepare for future expenses, both planned and unexpected.
So moved. Second. Two of us, him?
Yes.
Two of us, Townsend?
Yes.
Two of us, Patty Cooper, Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Two of us, Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two of us, Gill?
Yes.
Two of us, Jones?
Yes.
Last is FY twenty-six carryover funds. On June thirtieth, the following FY twenty-five funds were remaining to carry over. The board is asked to approve and appropriate the carryover funds from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six as listed below.
So moved.
Second.
Two of us, Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Two of us, Watson?
Yes.
Two of us, Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Two of us, Patty Cooper, Jones?
Yes.
Two of us, Townsend?
Yes.
Two of us, him?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And now we have the county minister report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, a few things to report on. One, on September fifteenth, we have a training session set up for the Board of Zoning Appeals through the Land Use Education Program at Virginia Commonwealth University. All five of our BZA members are scheduled to take the training, and I'll say, Terry, you're certainly welcome. I think at one o'clock, the training's going to start, and if you want to be fed lunch, come at twelve-thirty. Strategic plan, again, mark your calendars, Thursday, January the eighth, from twelve to six P M., and Thursday, January twenty-ninth, from twelve-thirty to six, and Friday morning, from eight-thirty to twelve, with Tyler St. Clair. So that's in January. I just want to make sure you all get that on your calendars.
They're successive days, aren't they?
Two of them are successive. So one is on the eighth, we'll kind of set the program, and it's one afternoon, the following morning. So you'll get a half-day at work each.
Lovely morning followed by a morning, rather than run it straight into the next business day. That's, that's tougher.
Tougher? You, what'd you rather do morning?
As far as being gone.
Okay.
You know, you'd rather be, instead of just continue to be gone, you'd rather be back and get some work done, and as far as being a professor, you know, doing something else for a living.
How about everybody else? Two, two mornings?
Understand what I'm?
I know exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
Gives you afternoon to come back.
Two afternoons or two mornings is much better than an afternoon running into the next morning.
Yeah, I agree with you.
All right. We'll see if we make that happen.
Okay.
Or start in the morning and do it all in one day.
I'll see, you can do that, kind of burns.
I sent the burn gel.
Third Street, Milwood, it was actually in the newspaper today, VDOT will be holding a community meeting on the proposed improvements to that intersection. They're evaluating improvements, including turn lanes or roundabout. I think the turn lanes is going to be the preferred alternative. Although the project is located in town, the intersection serves the hip park and traffic coming off of four sixty interchange in the county. That's certainly one of the things we've been trying to stress with VDOT is plan for eventually a four-leg intersection out there on four sixty.
I feel like a kid who, like, asks for one thing for Christmas, and then they've got something else.
Yeah.
Like, not the intersection I was hoping VDOT was going to choose to pump millions of dollars into.
And I will say, it's the hip park that's driving it, but it's also probably the ten million dollar versus the fifty million dollar fix. But we'll, I'll say, we'll take what we can get, but we're trying to make sure they keep the big prize in, in the view. So if you have an opportunity and you can show up at the meeting, October ninth, Moton, five-thirty to seven. I'm pleased to report, after one year of effort, we've been able to reach agreement with Peavers to place one of their two daytime EMS units at the Prospect Volunteer Fire Department Station for a ninety-day trial period to gauge impact on response times to the overall EMS system. Starting next Monday, September fifteenth, they will provide ten and a half hours of staffing coverage from eight A M. to six-thirty P M. The goal is to improve response times in the Prospect, Darlington Heights areas of the county, while hopefully not negatively impacting response times to other areas of the county, including the town of Farmville, when dispatch receives multiple calls. We are going to try to set up a photo op that morning of the fifteenth, and we'll get word out. Anybody, certainly Supervisor Gill, Supervisor Emmert, your two districts are covered from that station, so we'll try to set something up to do a quick photo op.
The fifteenth.
Yes, sir. In addition, Trey's been meeting with the Prospect Fire Department to help make sure that staff can be accommodated in the building, buying a couple reclining chairs, a smart TV, and stuff to, when they're staffed in, in the building, to make sure they're, they feel like they're at home. So we're helping Prospect out with that. Virginia Department of Fire Programs Grant, we've submitted a grant to the Department of Fire Programs for P P E, that's your personal protective gear, on behalf of four county departments, Hampton, Sidney, Prospect, Darlington Heights, and Rice. It's a hundred percent-funded, non-matching grant. If awarded, it would be ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Would provide twenty-three sets of turnout gear. This is supposed to be a quick award process, so we hope to hear something in the next thirty to forty-five days. Thanks to Trey for spearheading that effort.
Did Lunenburg do Placidate grant?
I believe so. That's why we typically won't pull Maheron in, is because they're usually falling to Lunenburg's grant. Trash and debris complaints, as directed by the board at our last meeting, we did provide notice to the owners and the tenants of properties on Railroad Avenue and Darlington Heights Road, and gave them thirty days from the date of August eighteenth to get the properties cleaned up. If not, the county's going to step in. As of yet, we have not heard anything back, but we'll keep you posted on that as well. I'm happy to report, and thanks to Terry, we were able to complete the process to get Enterprise Lane, Route seven eighty-seven, out there by the VDOT shop and leading to the industrial park, a business park, added to the state highway system this past week. It's been a, we've been working on that since I got here, and I know the county was working on that project for three or four years before I got here. So it's glad to get that behind us. We've got a couple board engagement opportunities. Tomorrow, at five-thirty P M. at Moton is the Chamber New Teacher Welcome Event. So if you can go out to Moton and see, meet and greet the new teachers.
What time is that?
Five-thirty P M. Typically, that's what, Prince Edward and Fuqua, Chip, and Cumberland? And Cumberland. And we're not going to steal any Cumberland teachers while we're there, are we? Not this year.
All up to them, aren't you?
At eleven, and it's eleven A M. on Friday, we have the ribbon cutting out at Five Pillars meets. So if you're able to attend, eleven A M., and I'll send a reminder. I know we will have Secretary Matt Lauer will be there from the Department of Ag, and hopefully some other folks from the state will be there as well. I think their grand, their official grand opening is on Saturday. And Dr. Pride has a town hall meeting. It's on the twenty-third.
Yes.
Originally was scheduled for the eighteenth. It's been moved to twenty-third, and it will be at, not at Crawley Forum, it'll be at.
At the fire.
At the fire department.
Yes.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I would, I would just say one thing, Mr. Chairman. If you, with respect to the scheduling of that thing, if, if it winds up costing the county more money, don't worry about it. Like, if you have to pay outside people to stay longer and all that, that's.
She's going to be staying here anyways. It won't, it shouldn't cost.
If it does, disregard my.
All right. We'll see if we make it work.
Quick question. Clean Harbors is quite, I'm just still looking after this. We only pay that.
Yes.
Someone bring, because they've got us a quote for propane cylinders, and our flyer says, "Don't bring propane cylinders."
So it is only what we use. They estimate it.
But sometimes people bring other gas cylinders, not just the propane ones that we all use.
Somebody brought a settling tank.
Yes.
So are we turning that away, or accepting it and just?
We have to, yeah, we accept.
Saying. But we can, but we can get rid of those.
Yeah.
Yeah. Settling oxygen, nitrogen.
Settling and oxygen tanks actually belong to somebody. They have a serial number. They need to be returned to the owner.
You are correct. If we only pay, that's just a quote from last year. We only pay if people show up with the items. The only, the only hard and fast part is their legalization.
Thank you.
So everything else is one and miss.
We're going to fifteenth. You plan on doing a tour of the solar facility?
We are. I'll be reaching out to you. We've got, I've got fifteenth and the twenty-second. I've heard from maybe five or six of you, and so if anybody hasn't talked to me and you want to, but I'll, I'll shoot out some dates and times this week who I've got scheduled.
And what time does the morning start?
Nine-thirty, I think. I think I had you down for nine-thirty next Monday, so.
That's, that's next Monday, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, sir. We will move on to the monthly reports.
Just happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair, or.
And what you're, you're knowledgeable, can you tourism, business center?
No comment.
Andy, if you just get.
Mr. Chairman, there's a M I A P O W thing on the lawn next Friday, if I'm not mistaken. Doug, if you would, check that out, but everyone is invited. I got something from the BFW tonight on the way here.
And that's a good reminder. So if you remember, our meeting in November, because of Election Day, we bumped it from Tuesday to Thursday, the sixth. So it went back from Tuesday back to Thursday.
Thursday before.
So it's the first Thursday rather than our second Tuesday. At six o'clock, we are looking to try to schedule a Purple Heart Community Event to recognize the Purple Heart recipients from our list of veterans in the community. Sarah, who you're working with, a couple different groups to pull that off, correct?
Correct. We were contacted by the National Purple Heart Organization. It's going to ask the board to consider a resolution of proclamation to become a Purple Heart County. And then the Virginia War Memorial would like to participate because it is the trident fifty-eighth anniversary of George Washington, basically. And that's the origination of the Purple Hearts. Had different names during the American Revolution, but anyway, they've asked if they can come and participate in the ceremony, and then all things veterans are of Piedmont Area Veterans Council, so Sarah will be here. And we're going to, via social media and Sarah's, we're trying to invite members of the community who are Purple Heart recipients, to, to, to join the board in that process.
And that's on the sixth?
The sixth, at six.
I want to make sure that Dallas Tinsley's name is on that list. He's a recipient of four Purple Hearts of Vietnam.
If you ask Dallas, put it on his calendar. We'd love to have him.
Yes.
There's no master list. There's no Purple Heart recipients, so we've got to generate that list ourselves.
Supervisor Emmett, we're missing over here.
The, that sixth, we are all invited to the Farm Bureau Annual Convention, which I am president of. I can't be two places at once. Let me, let me see if I can get that changed.
Let me, let me see if I can get that changed.
Invitation for anyone that would like to walk a 9/11 event from Darlington Heights Fire Department to Beth Peir Street, 6 o'clock, the 11th, and transportation will be provided to return you to the firehouse. Everyone's invited.
That's this Thursday.
This Thursday.
And we have one item, Mr. Chair, that's on your table pack. Sarah, you want to present that, you want me to? All right, I'll, I'll get it. So in our July 8, 2025 meeting, the Properties Committee, while reviewing the bids for the Worsham Convenience Site, removed the, recommended that the board remove the additive alternate for lighting from the site bid, and that was based on the fact that we had an $84,502 bid for lighting. The second lowest bidder had a $55 or $7,000 bid. Attached for the board's consideration is a proposal from Creative Electric for $58,000. So we're able to go from 84 to 58. We think we may be able to get it down a little bit more, working with Mark. If we go a little higher on the polls, we may be able to go from eight polls to six polls, which will cut it down a little. The polls will be a little more expensive, but you get two, fewer of them. So at this point, we were going to basically pull that out of the contract, Mark would install, Creative Electric would install those separately under a separate contract, but we're able to save, you know, considerable, $26,000 bucks.
And we are using his site for everything now.
We are, we are, at no cost.
Correct, but.
Yeah. So I'd ask for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Emmert?
Yes.
Do you have a town?
Yes.
Do you have a Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Do you have a gentleman?
Yes.
Do you have a watcher?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
And do you have a gentleman?
Yes.
Okay. Any further bids?
Yes, sir.
One more, one more thing, Mr. Chairman, the, I guess during the part of the construction phase at Worsham, I'm, I'm guessing that's where all the pine logs came to the landfill? That's my, I mean, that's my guess. Is there, is there a reason why that we will not sell them? Is it?
So, I'll say, the way, the way it was bid was, it was ultimately, they're, on the contractor, whether they sold them, took them, removed them, and they basically made the call, and I double-checked with the engineer, that the value wasn't enough for them to sell them versus take them out to the landfill. Of course, our guys will have to burn them as part of the, with the rest of the brush, but it just, there wasn't enough there to justify for the one to two acres to get a contractor in. I think they had the whole site down in a couple days.
Oh, yeah. Does, I, I guess what I would say is, does the board have a problem with us selling them, and if, if they don't have any problem, if they will, if we can get a vote to do so, I've got two or three guys that would be interested in, in buying them.